Good evening. Welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the East Bridgewater Planning Board for May 6, 2024. We apologize. We've had some technical difficulties. We're a little late getting started. We'll call the meeting to order at 7:15 PM. With us tonight, we have members Diane Phillips, Rachel Tedesco, John Lawler, Roy Gardner. We have alternate member Yvonne McCray, myself, the chairman Kevin Riley. For purposes of our meeting tonight, with respect to all non-subdivision-related matters, given the fact that there are less than our seven members, regular members present, Yvonne will be voting on any other matters that come before us. It is being 7:15. We do have an advertised public hearing with respect to a proposal, several proposals actually, for amendments to the zoning bylaws. These will be matters that will be considered at the town meeting on the 13th. It is the responsibility of the Planning Board to hold a public hearing with respect to each and to make a recommendation to town meeting as to whether to or not to adopt the proposed changes or amendments, as the case may be. So to start off, we'll just read the legal notice. That is a legal notice. It's the East Bridgewater Planning Board. Planning Board of the town of East Bridgewater will hold a public hearing on Monday, May 6, in the Town Office Building 175 Central Street, large second-floor conference room, to consider the proposed amendment to the zoning bylaws of the town as follows. At 7:15, the purpose of the hearing is to review and discuss a proposed amendment to replace the current Section 13 site plan approval with a new Section 13. Full text of the proposed amendment is available for review during normal business hours at the Planning Building Department, 175 Central Street, second floor, and that was advertised in the Enterprise on 422 and 429. So just in terms of general discussion, the amendment, again, to Section 13 regarding site plan approval is for purposes of basically replacing the entire section as it is now written. The intent is to do a couple of things. One is to better define the materials that need to be submitted in connection with the application for consideration by the Board, and then, secondly, to better define or more fully define the standards that or the matters that will be considered by the Board in determining whether or not to approve the proposed site plan. So I'd open up, at this point, to anyone in the audience who might have a comment or a question regarding the proposed change. Second time and third time, no comments. We'll close. We'll make a motion to close that portion of the public hearing.
So moved.
Mr. Gardner makes the motion. A second?
I'll second it.
The second. The public portion of the meeting is closed. Discussion by the Board. Questions or comments with regard to the proposal on revision of site plan approval, Section 13 in our bylaws?
This was discussed before at a previous meeting.
It has been discussed previously by the Board, yes, indeed. The chair would make a motion relative to a proposed amendment to the printed materials that we have, and that is with regard to the last sentence of Section 1A, which currently states, "An application fee in the amount of $200 shall be due and payable at the time of filing." Chair would move to amend that to say that "an application fee in an amount to be determined from time to time by the Planning Board shall be due and payable at the time of filing." It is intended only to avoid the idea that any time that that fee wants to be changed, we would have to go back before town meeting. It's simply something that could be done by the Planning Board by vote.
I'll second the motion.
Motion is made. Seconded by Mr. Gardner. Discussion on that motion. To amend. All those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed. That will reflect the unanimous vote to approve that amendment. So the motion, then, that the chair would entertain would be one to recommend approval of the revised Section 13 to town meeting with the amendment as discussed. Do I hear that motion?
So moved.
Motion is made by Mr. Gardner. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is seconded by Ms. Phillips. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor of that motion to approve with the amendment or to recommend with the amendment so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Record will reflect the unanimous vote of all members and associate members present in voting. Motion to close the public hearing with respect to Article 13 or Section 13.
So moved.
So moved.
Motion is made by Ms. Phillips, seconded by Mr. Gardner. All those in favor of the motion to close that public hearing?
Aye.
And opposed. And hearing is closed. Next item is with respect to Section 7 of our bylaws as to enforcement. Again, legal notice. Town of East Bridgewater Planning Board, Planning Board of the town of East Bridgewater will hold a public hearing on Monday, May 6, 2024, at 7:20 PM in the Town Office Building 175 Central Street, large second-floor conference room, to consider a proposed amendment to the zoning bylaw of the town as follows. Purpose of this hearing will be to review and discuss a proposed amendment to Section 7 enforcement, which is intended to clarify the extent of enforcement authority. Full text of the proposed zoning bylaw amendment is available for review during normal business hours at the Planning Building Department, 175 Central Street, second floor, and that, again, was advertised in the Brockton Enterprise, 422 and 429 of 2024. We'll declare that public hearing to be open at 7:20 and would take any comments or questions from anyone in the audience with regard to the proposed amendment. Second time and third time. Hearing none. Chair would entertain a motion to close the public portion of the hearing.
So moved.
Motion is made by Ms. Tedesco, seconded by Mr. Lawler. All those in favor of that motion so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Record will reflect the unanimous vote of all members and associate members present in voting. So by way of discussion, this is another matter that's been discussed here previously. The intention of this is to add just a few words to the introductory paragraph of Section 7, so as to clarify that enforcement authority extends to post-hearing matters such as approval of decisions or permits that are granted by the Board or any other authority, as would involve zoning here in the town. So basically, it just clarifies what I think is already basically the standard under state law, but it just, it fully sets it out. So are there questions or comments with respect to that? It's a 1, 2, 3, it's about a 10 to probably a dozen-word amendment in the first sentence of the bylaw as written, and you have all copies of it. Discussion. Hearing none. Chair would entertain a motion to recommend the approval of the amendment to Section 7 enforcement as printed in the materials.
So moved.
Mr. Gardner makes the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion is seconded by Mr. Lawler. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor so signify by saying aye, yes.
Aye.
And opposed. That should be reflected as the unanimous vote of all members and associate members present in voting. Chair would entertain a motion to close the public hearing with respect to Section 7.
So moved.
Motion is made by Ms. Tedesco and seconded by Mr. Lawler. Any discussion? None. All those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed. Public hearing with respect to Section 7 is closed. It being 7:25 PM, we have a public hearing with respect to an amendment, proposed amendment to Section 5E of our zoning bylaws. That is the ARPUD, Adult Retiree Planed Unit Development District. Legal notice. Legal notice. Town of East Bridgewater Planning Board of the town of East Bridgewater will hold public hearing on Monday, May 6, 2024, Town Office Building 175 Central Street, large second-floor conference room, to consider proposed amendment to the town zoning bylaws as follows. The purpose of the hearing is to review and discuss a proposed amendment affecting Section 5E, Adult Retiree Planed Unit Development District. To add language, requiring an onsite wastewater treatment plant if property to be developed is located in an Aqua for Protection District. Hearing open at this time. Accept any comments or questions from the audience. I'll ask it once. Hearing none. Second time and third time. There being none. Motion to close the public comment portion of the hearing.
I'll make a motion.
Motion is made by Mr. Lawler. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Phillips. Okay. Sorry. I'm missing my cues over there. Public comment portion of the hearing is closed. Discussion. Mr. Gardner, this is your...
Yes. What this actually does is relatively simply add a sentence in two places in the zoning bylaw. It says, "This district, this district is an overlay district applicable to all zones of the town except for those areas within a watershed protection district unless the proposed project will utilize a fully approved and permitted three-phased wastewater processing plant." So basically, that says that any locations that fall within the Aqua for Protection districts that could potentially become an over-55 or an ARPUD, Adult Retirement Planned Unit Development, would require a fully approved and DEP permitted three-phased wastewater treatment processing plant if they are, in fact, located within that Aqua for Protection district.
Where now, that could not be done at all.
They would at least theoretically have to put in a conventional septic system, which puts extremely onerous requirements on lot sizes, which basically wouldn't allow a conventional over-55 development there.
Right.
Okay. Further discussion with respect to the proposed amendment to 5E?
That seems very obviously needed.
Okay. Other comments? Questions? Hearing none. Chair would entertain a motion to recommend adoption of the amendment to Section 5E as printed in the materials.
Make a motion.
Motion is made by Mr. Lawler. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Gardner. Further discussion? None. All those in favor of the motion so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? No. Motion is adopted by unanimous vote of all members and associate members present in voting. Chair would now entertain a motion to close the public hearing with respect to Section 5E.
So moved.
Motion is made by Mr. Gardner, seconded by Ms. Tedesco. All those in favor of closing the public hearing on Section 5E so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Again, the record will reflect the unanimous vote of all members and associate members present in voting. It being 7:30, final public hearing this evening is with respect to the adoption of an overlay district on Thatcher Street.
Yes.
Public notice. The Planning Board of the town of East Bridgewater will hold a public hearing on Monday, May 6, 2024, in the Town Office Building 175 Central Street, large second-floor conference room, to consider a proposed amendment to the town zoning bylaws as follows. Purpose of this hearing will be to review and discuss a proposed amendment that would add a new Section 5AA, Thatcher Street Overlay District, or so-called TSOD, that would allow, as of right, the sale of used motor vehicles and motor vehicle parts in the conduct of related motor vehicle recycling operations within the district. Full text of the proposed zoning amendment, bylaw amendment, rather, is available for review during normal business hours at the Planning Building Department, 175 Central Street, second floor, and as in the previous cases, that was advertised in the Brockton Enterprise on 422 and 429. At this point, we'll open up to public comment. I don't see any hands. No? Okay. Nobody's got anything. All right. Second time and third time. Hearing nothing. Motion to close the public portion of the hearing with regard to the Thatcher Street overlay.
I'll make the motion.
Motion is made by Mr. Lawler. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Ms. Tedesco. Discussion? None. All those in favor?
Aye.
The unanimous vote of all members and associate members present in voting. So with respect to discussion, this is something that has been worked on and discussed with representatives of property owners down in that area, and essentially looks to sort of memorialize what this area has been for some lengthy period of time. It basically takes these properties that are currently used for salvage and auto purposes, and it removes them from non-conforming status. It basically creates an overlay zone so that the uses would be recognized as permitted in those districts. There are certain height setback and other requirements that, right now, are either different or don't exist. So from the town's perspective, it is something that is probably beneficial. It's also certainly something that would help the owners in the sense of taking away that non-conforming status. Roy, any comments other than that? Anything from you?
I think the major driver behind that is Everett's Auto Parts, which is located on Thatcher Street, which is actually a now basically international auto parts, primarily reused auto parts operation. They own a substantial portion of the Thatcher Street used auto parts locations. They have indicated previously, based on ongoing discussions over the better part of a year, that they have difficulty in the commercial market obtaining financing because of the fact they're a grandfathered use and not a use that's allowed under the current zoning bylaw. So the intent is to try and address that problem by placing this overlay district on those used auto parts Class II licenses in the Thatcher Street area, so that they're no longer technically under zoning, considered protected grandfathered uses, but allowed uses under the current overlay district that would be potentially adopted at this annual town meeting.
Other discussion? Other questions? Hearing none. Chair would then entertain a motion to recommend adoption of the new Thatcher Street Overlay District, the Section 5AA, at town meeting, as is printed, a text of which as is printed in the materials we have before us.
Make a motion.
Mr. Lawler makes the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Gardner. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of that motion so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Record will reflect, again, the unanimous vote of all members and associate members present in voting. Chair would now accept a motion to close the public hearing with respect to the Thatcher Street Overlay District as proposed.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Phillips, second.
I'll second that.
Ms. Tedesco is on the second. Discussion? None. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed. That public hearing is closed at this time. So that completes the four public hearings that we have this evening. Relatively good time.
Okay.
Real quickly, just jumping back to A2 on the agenda. That is the approval of available minutes. We do have minutes prepared for the meetings of March 18 and April 1, 2024. Assuming that members have had an opportunity to review those minutes and don't have any comments or questions, chair would entertain a motion to accept the minutes of 318 and 41 as printed, waiting formal reading at the same time.
Make a motion.
Motion is made by Mr. Lawler. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mrs. Tedesco. Further discussion on the minutes? Hearing none. All those in favor of that motion so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Again, record will reflect a unanimous vote of all members and associate members present in voting. Okay, so I think we're up to Speedway Park. Mr. Smith, if you will.
How are you doing?
Good. How are you? Good. Nice to see you again.
Good to see all of you.
Thank you.
So, over the course of my two meetings, we've had some discussions with regard to parking and uses and such over at Speedway Park and the two buildings that have been developed and now are sitting there. And I think the hope tonight would be just to kind of finalize some numbers as far as parking requirements and such for purposes of going PMP, since our last meeting, PMP Consulting has prepared and we've had submitted to the Board a plan which shows the proposed parking and kind of defines some things. So Matt, if you want to go through that a little bit, just to give us your perspective on that?
Sure.
So last time when I was in, you guys asked me to meet with PMP and take my two-page proposal and put it on paper and then have PMP add what they needed, and that's what we came up with. I believe that we sent it over to the, PMP sent it over to the building department, so you should have that for your computer screen. I brought two copies of paper in case you wanted to see it.
This is, this is, this is hard to read. I'm sorry. I was trying to...
A little modification of the...
I'm okay with the plan. I think they've done what we asked, but I don't think we want to treat this as a special permit modification until such time as we have the actual special permit.
Yeah, yeah. Sorry about that. Go ahead.
All right. So I met with PMP. I did everything that you had requested. You asked for employee parking. You asked for no parking signs. And then you asked for a planned parking schedule, and we went through and did out a parking schedule.
Yeah, yeah.
That's what I have.
Okay. Questions, ladies? Start over here.
I don't have any.
Rachel?
Yeah. We went to visit the site Friday, Roy and I, and we saw that it was, you know, a challenging place to put in additional parking, but this plan looks good.
My two went up and looked at it. Looks good.
Mr. Gardner?
So I agree that the table that's included on the current document entitled Special Permit Modification that we received last week addresses the issue that we've been trying to get down into detailed numbers and that the table addresses all the existing uses within Building B and C. I would also note that it includes an additional bunch of changes that I think we need to treat as part of the special permit modification that will be coming up in the next meeting or two. So I think at this point in time, I think we're happy with the numbers that are shown for the Building C and Building B parking, as well as the locations. In the diagram that we have, all of those areas in red will have to be treated as special permit modifications, which will require action under our special permit public hearing, again, which is going to be coming up in the next...
The next meeting.
The next meeting. Is it the next meeting?
Yes.
The next meeting. So as of right now, we're okay. I just want to point out for the record that, as it currently stands, Building A doesn't exist. The tenants of Building A do not exist, so the actual required parking for that building unknown at this point in time. I think, based on the modifications that have been made at this point, applicant has indicated that it's clear they're right at the threshold for parking and that they need additional parking to accommodate Building A, which is actually shown on that special permit modification. Again, I think we need to leave that open to the special permit modification hearing, which will be coming up. But as of today, I think with the existing building, buildings, I should say, that Buildings B and Building C, that at this point, the numbers indicate that the existing parking spaces on the original special permit fall within the numbers we need to see. Very close, but they do fall within those numbers. I also want to acknowledge that in the information that was provided by the applicant, that they have acknowledged that there's potential conflicts when there's any significant events, specifically with the gymnastics studio and/or the baseball facility, if they're running concurrently with any other events other than just the training sessions that have been indicated in the tables, that the applicant needs to pay attention to those and try and make sure that those times don't end up being...
I love to watch.
Overlapping, let's say.
Yes.
Because when those events overlap, in fact, right now, when they end at one hour and start at the same hour, that basically means there's many as four events happening at the same time. Four events with people leaving, four events with people coming in. If there's two events in each site, they need to pay attention to that. Does that create some difficulty? Other than that, I think they've done what we asked them to do to this point.
Yes.
And any further items I think we can address at the time of the special permit modification hearing at the next meeting?
Yvonne?
I have no questions.
Okay. So I just have a couple of comments. I have, I go by there frequently. I've spent some time up there, just kind of observing, and I have somewhat of a different view on the numbers as they're presented. I think that with respect to Building C, I actually think that the gymnastics facility is probably a more intensive use than is the baseball facility, quite honestly. I think that the baseball facility is more of a, a little larger in size, is probably more of a drop-off and pickup than perhaps the dance gymnastics facility is. So I would agree in terms of the total number of spaces for that building, being 65, but I would, my recommendation would be that the Stardust account for 35 of those and that the Eagles account for 30. I would also like to, so again, same number, 65, no change there. I would also like to see the number of employee spaces, which appears now to be seven, to be increased to 10. And again, observationally, I think that the jujitsu needs to stay where it is. I believe this is requesting a reduction to seven. I believe it needs to stay at 15, only because every time that I see that there's classes in session or activity there, the entire back of that building is full. So as I would look at this, the other thing that I would say is I've, I don't know if anybody else has actually sort of counted these spaces, but I'm missing four. This suggests that with the addition of the new spaces, there would be 150, those being 139 on the ground and 11 in the garage. For the life of me, I can only find 135 spaces and then 11 for 146. So that would be one question. Just maybe I'm missing something somewhere? Mr. Carrara perhaps snuck some, or it wasn't Mr. Carrara, I don't think.
No, it wasn't me asking. Not touching his family.
No, it wasn't you. Not guilty. Not guilty. So that's the only question that I have there with respect to numbers. So if you do that out, 35 for the gym, 30 for the Eagles, 15 for jujitsu. jujitsu, ten for employees, and twelve for the existing storage, uh, that would take you to a hundred and two spaces, um, and then, uh...
I'm, I'm sorry, sorry, can you, can you say the numbers so that I can write them down here, please?
Certainly, so I'm, I'm just reallocating, again, I'm, I'm talking for myself.
No, I understand.
Whether everybody agrees with that or not, uh, that's to be seen. Thirty-five for the gym, thirty for Eagles, fifteen for, uh, jujitsu, ten employees...
That's th- that's thirty total for the, for the Eagles or thirty?
Total.
Thirty total?
Where you have, you're now saying...
At twenty-six, right, so you're asking for four more spaces?
I thought you had forty.
In the right-hand column, I have twenty Eagles, I have twenty spaces for parents and six spaces for students, so you're asking for four more? Is that what you're, you're saying you'd like?
Well, I'm looking, I'm looking at your, your handout here, uh, and I thought it was consistent, maybe I'm wrong, but I thought it was consistent, which is saying forty spots for, uh, the Eagles, twenty-five spots for the gym.
That handout I handed to PMP and then they did their own calculations on it, and this is the numbers that they came up with.
Okay. So the other thing that I would say, um, is, is again, I, 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 I'm not going to, their, their calculations are their calculations, I don't believe that the, the methodology is correct, uh, in the sense that, again, we're, we're talking about, um, seats to spaces and I, I simply don't believe that that's what our bylaw calls for, I believe our bylaw, um, that, that is not, as we've talked about, gymnasium, uh, under the definition in our bylaw. So I, I'm agreeing with your numbers, um, I'm disagreeing with the methodology, I guess, uh, to get us there. Change in the employee spaces from, I believe you have, uh, what do you got? Actually, you've, uh, there's more than, was it seven, nine, so, what did I say? Ten, so it's, it's only a change of one. And then the twelve that you have, uh, for the storage, uh, uses existing. So that would be a hundred and two spaces in total that I'm seeing as accounted for at this point in time. And I don't know how others feel about that, but that's kind of where I'm at.
So, if we were to change the, the numbers that you're requesting, and we would add...
I'm changing by, uh, by four spaces over what you have, I'm just reallocating.
Okay.
Uh, largely.
Right. We, that would bring us from, it says here eighty-seven total. If we add four more, that's ninety-one, we s- and I'm not sure where we're missing four spaces on here, but...
I mean, if, again, if, if you physically go around and count...
Right.
I, I've done it a couple of times and maybe I'm just overlooking them.
No, that's, I understand.
Uh, but that's, I'm only finding a hundred and thirty-five as opposed to a hundred and thirty-nine.
Right, well, that still would put us at a hundred and, uh, forty, a hundred and forty-six?
Yeah, I mean, so, right, so, so I mean, they may be there and that's something to be discussed, I think, at, as Roy says, at the next, the next hearing, uh, if, if there, if indeed we find that there aren't those spaces, this can just be modified to...
Just change the number from one-fifty to one-forty-six, right?
Exactly, or show me where the four spaces are.
Right.
You know, so that's fine.
And then if you're requ- I mean, I don't see any reason we can't add four more spaces into the, if you're requesting that for jujitsu to have a few more spots, that's...
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's basically, I think, changing jujitsu from, what is it?
Nine?
Yeah, nine to fifteen, so that's a change of six.
Okay.
Uh, one employee and just reallocating the, uh, the gym and the Eagles among the sixty-five spaces. So the going forward, you know, gym decides they're going to leave, you pick up thirty-five spaces as long as you, uh, you know, have sufficient parking to allow for that, if, assuming everything else is filled out, you've got thirty-five spaces within which to work for that use, you know?
Right. The building on this table, uh, just to clarify, on this table, it does show that Building A has ten spaces allotted, um, so that, that table does take into account Building A. I know Building A isn't built yet, but we have allocated ten spaces for that so far, and that is part of the eighty-seven.
As I, as I look at it, uh, Matt, you know, you've got, you're, you're accounting for right now, you're accounting for a hundred and two spaces, whether you've got a hundred and forty-six or a hundred and fifty, you've got the difference...
Correct.
...to be utilized among the new ones that you propose to develop, plus the remaining existing spaces.
Right, which is still the same, we have forty empty spa- parking spots pretty much every time that I'm up there.
Something in that neighborhood, I suppose, yeah.
Great.
Is that?
Yeah, I'm not going to disagree with his number of empty spaces, but that doesn't address the issue we're trying to get to here. In front of that Building C, he's got forty-four spaces, he's already acknowledged that worst-case, when they're fully occupied, uh, he needs somewhere around seventy-five to eighty spaces, of which only forty-four are in front of that building. That's a big issue.
Yeah, okay.
That's a major issue.
There's never been...
That's a major issue. That's all we're going to say tonight about that. We'll discuss this at the special permit hearing, but the three times I've been there, there's only been two people parked on that westerly side of the parking lot, two. All of those spaces in front of that building, when jujitsu, the gym, and the baseball facility are occupied, every single space in there except the handicap spaces has been occupied. That's only forty spaces.
And I think it's a matter of, of, you know, sort of human nature, which is to park in the closest space to where you're going, you know, so it is what it is, I guess, is... I, I certainly acknowledge what, what Mr. Gardner's saying, I mean, it is, it is...
And we haven't addressed the issue that, that clearly comes up. When a class at the gym ends at the same time a class begins, actually two classes end and two classes begin, the traffic flow through that parking lot is absolutely abysmal. Cause people are trying to pick up kids or get out of the, the facility while their cars are still parked there, while people are coming into the facility and trying to find somewhere to park. That twenty-minute period of time is a horror show, the four times that I've been there, each time. Seven o'clock to eight o'clock, four different times. That's a problem. Cause just as important as the parking itself is, is the traffic flow on and off the site. And we'll discuss this in, in more detail at the next meeting, but we need lots more signs and lots more pavement parking as to what the traffic flow on that site needs to be. Cause traffic in front of the Building C should be one-way east to west. Behind Building B could be coming the other way from west to east, so there's one-way traffic on both sides of that, so that we don't have cars trying to back out, pull in, and go against the incoming traffic flow...
Both ways.
...that is trying to drop off students and find someplace to park.
Yeah, it makes sense, it, yeah, for safety.
Cause there's, there's absolutely no traffic flow in that site right now. It, it's just a free-for-all.
Oh.
So I think, uh, Matt, that, you know, summary is, numbers-wise, you know, we're, we're, I think, somewhere in the ballpark. Uh, I think traffic flow, maybe we'll think about that a little bit more. I think that, uh, you know, change the table, uh, to reflect what we're talking about tonight, numbers-wise, um, and, you know, we'll see where it goes from there with respect to the larger question of, you know, these additional spaces and the, um, the remarking, the island in the, in front of or behind Building B, however you want to look at it, and as I say, the addition of the, um, that new sto- that new parking over to, um, the side of Building A.
Okay, so do you, would, do you need me to resubmit a new plan from PMP with the changes made on it? And if so, now, do you want me to change the arrow flow path? I mean, would that do it now?
In the words of, um, a legendary individual in these parts, I'm not a traffic engineer, so...
Well, I would strongly suggest that, that in front of Building C and behind Building B, where you're showing the traffic flow on either side of that, of that parking area...
I think that makes sense, yeah, just one-way each, each direction, yeah.
That's got to change. It's got to be one-way, one-way, and in, in one-way, the other-way, whichever you do it. I think it should be one-way along the front of Building C...
To the le- toward left, west to east, no, uh, east to west.
East to west.
Yeah.
And then in front of the other building, west to east.
West to east, yeah.
So the traffic comes in, if they want to drop off and then try and find a parking space, fine, but we shouldn't have traffic trying to go all the same way that people are trying to come in at the same time they're dropping off, trying to find a space to park.
Yeah, yeah, makes sense.
I, we can, I'm not trying to be argumentative, cause I agree with you, but if you have a set at Chris John's Plaza and people just cut right through Chris John's to get out onto Highland Street, people take the path of least resistance everywhere they go, right?
Yep.
Ocean State Job Lot's the exact same, it's a disaster.
So, I mean, I think, Matt, that, that what we can require or ask is that you guys make the best efforts to direct people in the right direction.
I understand that, and that's why, that's exactly what we're trying to do here. So you would, you want me to put arrows on the pavement going...
I think signage would be useful too, uh, to, to a certain extent, I mean, uh, you know, for example, um, I, just one other thought, you know, up in the left-hand, upper-left-hand corner, uh, in behind Building C, there is, there are arrows, but there is nothing in the way of signage to indicate that's one-way or do not enter, behind Building C from the westerly side. So there probably should be a sign there, you know, that says something to that effect, do not enter, one-way, whatever, and other signs like that to manage the traffic flow in front of, uh, B and C, as, as, as Mr. Gardner was just talking about, I think would be useful as well.
And you're talking about the traffic flowing from east to west in front of Building C?
Correct.
In this area right here?
Immediately in front of Building C.
Okay.
West to east, immediately behind Building B.
Right.
So it's a simple circle, basically.
Or in front of it, however you want to...
Oh, okay, yeah. Oh, I see, okay, but...
Whatever you want to call it.
I see, around those sixteen plus four spaces, yeah, and, okay.
So, um, at the next hearing then, um, we can, we can, uh, take a final look at this and vote one way or another, uh, on numbers and, um, traffic pattern and the addition of the parking and anything else that, uh, comes up. We made a lot of progress, Matt, um, so hopefully that can, uh...
So a couple little changes and, so you need me to come back to the next meeting? Or are you, were you just going to handle this with the next?
Uh, I mean, I don't know who's, I know, I assume Attorney Pellegrini's going to be here, um, because that is the hearings for both two-eleven and your property.
Right.
So, um, if you're going to attend, perfectly fine, if Rob is going to handle it, that's fine too.
We'll have the, uh, I will ask PMP to, uh, change the, make the little changes that we just talked about.
Okay, so I think those...
That's really all that you guys need changed? Is that where we're at?
Roy, anything other than that?
I, I think, as of right now, the traffic flow with, with pavement marking and some signage at the, at the entrance and exits, if you want to call it, of the various parking lanes, for now, I think the rest of it has done pretty much what we had asked for.
Okay.
We've got the counts that, that pretty much match up with what we were expecting, uh, based on the discussions we had the last time.
So, um...
And a caveat here again, uh, Building A, based on the numbers that you've given us, is going to be pretty much restricted to, to contractor bays, cause there's no extra parking. Even when that new parking goes in, uh, there's not going to be any extra parking for other uses than contractor bays that require more intense parking than, than a contractor bay. Otherwise, we gotta, we gotta trade off something somewhere.
I think, I think the other thing, Matt, just from my own comment there, is, um, depending upon what A is used as.
Right, right.
Uh, if it's going to be other than contractor bays, um, which personally is not my favorite, but in any event, um, clearly, if you're going to have employee parking on the side of and behind Building C, folks who are working in Building A ain't going to park over there, so you probably have to dedicate a couple of spaces there as well to think about that, you know, so, again, that depends upon your, your ultimate use.
Right.
Anybody else? Any other thoughts, questions? Okay, so I believe the, uh, hearings are at seven fifteen and thirty on, uh, the twentieth, uh, our next meeting, on the twentieth of this month, seven fifteen for one and seven thirty for the other, as they're scheduled right now.
Okay.
Two-eleven being first, I think.
Very good, thank you.
Thanks, Matt, appreciate your time.
Thanks, Matt, have a good night.
Mr. Carrara?
Hi!
How, how are you?
Good, how you doing?
Oh, I'm doing well. Which one have you got, or both?
Uh, no, I'm just here for Southridge.
Daisy or Southridge?
Southridge, okay, we'll...
Just in case you had any questions, I figured I'd pop in.
Okay, so, um, under C two on our agenda is the revised bond estimate for Southridge Drive. Uh, there was a submission made, uh, which, um, I've, uh, looked at and it would appear that, uh, everything was accounted for. Roy, you're better with that than, than I, um...
Yeah, I, I went through that in pretty good detail, looks like the, the numbers in there are pretty similar to the numbers we have on, on the original spreadsheet that we've been using, so I'm fine with the, with saying that we need to set the, the revised bond amount at a hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars. And, uh, that that will allow us to release the, uh, the remaining Phase Five lots if the, uh, bond total, uh, with the treasurer is a hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars.
Yeah, you just make up the difference.
Yeah, the total that they have is a hundred and ninety-four.
Like, what?
I, I know, no, no.
Another hundred and ninety-three?
They've already, I, I know we've already got some, I don't know exactly how much that is right now, but, okay. So wha- whatever needs to be added to bring the total balance in the account to a hundred and ninety-four thousand. So that's what, ninety-four thousand, give or take whatever the current interest rate has been accrued at, so it'll be a little less than ninety-four thousand. So that the grand total in the account will be a hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars.
Okay, yeah.
So I'll put that in the form of a motion.
Okay, so Mr. Gardner makes a motion with regard to, uh, Southridge Drive to, um, approve revision of the total surety from its existing amount to one hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars, uh, that amount to be deposited with the town treasurer, and that upon such deposit, the remaining Phase Five lots be released from, uh, the existing covenant. Yes?
Yes.
Okay, that is the motion?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Lawler. Discussion with regard to the motion.
Yep.
Hearing none. Regular members on this vote, uh, all those in favor, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed. That is the unanimous vote of all regular members present to increase to one ninety, one hundred and ninety-four thousand on the bond and, uh, to release remaining Phase Five lots upon posting. Outstanding job, Mr. Carrara, thank you, as always.
Glad I could be here to help. I'll get to the bottom of it.
Who miscounted those?
There you go, well, maybe, maybe it's me.
Okay, uh, Daisy Lane, in a revision to the lighting plan. Uh, this, uh, is an approved subdivision and request has been made by Mr. Burgess to relocate, uh, some of the, uh, poles and such. Mr. Gardner, comments?
Yeah, so, uh...
Revised plan has been submitted, and you should have copies.
I had a discussion with Mr. Burgess, uh, with a couple of, of the, uh, issues at hand relative to, uh, the location of the poles. One of those was, was raised by, uh, uh, the electric company. in that based on the standards, uh, guidance they've been given from the town, the town doesn't want to see a, uh, a town paid street light at the intersection of Daisy Lane and Central Street because there's already a street light that's only about seventy feet from there. Which actually does illuminate that intersection.
Too bright.
So, so the town doesn't want to pay for a second street light that's basically right next to the first one? So that's one of the two changes. The second change is at the far end of the subdivision as you come up near the cul-de-sac. They want to pull that street light back a little bit off of the cul-de-sac. Since there's actually no houses at the cul-de-sac itself. The electric company didn't run the lines all the way through to the cul-de-sac. And the, the base that's installed is short of the cul-de-sac as shown on the plan. So after going through there, I didn't see any real issues with that. The, the, the light that's nearest the cul-de-sac at the end of the street should pretty well illuminate the cul-de-sac itself. So I don't really see any issues there and those were the issues that were requested, or the changes that were requested by, by both the applicant and the, uh, and the electric company. So, so I don't really see any problem with those changes.
So, uh, according to the plan, it appears that there are four light fixtures that would be relocated. And, uh, the others would appear where indicated, uh, on that, on that revision. So, um, this plan does not appear to have a date on it, does it? Oh, yes, it does. That's the twenty twenty-one date, that's not going to help us too much. So the chair would entertain a motion to approve the, uh, relocation and/or removal of the streetlights on Daisy Lane as shown on the proposed lighting plan. Which for, um, for purposes of this meeting, it, it, this is the old plan that's, that we have in here. So we will mark this with today's date and I will sign that. So, um, that will be, uh, revision to the existing plan, uh, as per what's been submitted. Uh, it's the old J.K. Homegren Engineering Plan, uh, with, uh, revisions noted. So the motion to approve that, Mr. Gardner, yes?
So moved, and then just also note for the record that the, the original plan showed a total of seven streetlights with one of those streetlights being at the intersection of Central Street and Daisy Lane. The revised plan now shows six streetlights with those streetlights within the subdivision, uh, being very closely located to where they were originally. All slightly adjusted and that the, uh, proposed street light at the intersection of Central Street and Daisy Lane has been deleted from the plan as there is an existing street light within about a hundred feet of, of that intersection right now.
Yes.
Okay, so with those caveats, uh, the motion is made by Mr. Gardner to approve the, the revised plan. Second to the motion?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Lawler. Further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor with, uh, regular members only, so signify by saying aye.
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 And opposed. Record will reflect a unanimous vote of all regular members present in voting. Okay, uh, last item on the agenda tonight is, uh, MBTA community zoning. Uh, Mr. Gardner, an update?
Yeah, so just real quick, since we really can't look at anything tonight, uh, as best I can tell, because there's, there's no current updates with today's date on that. I have issued what I call draft one, which is what I will consider the first official draft for everybody. I did copy an awful lot of people, the selectmen, uh, all members of the board, uh, John Haynes. All the numbers are there in that email that was sent earlier today, this morning at some time. There is still an intent to have a, uh, MBTA zoning district south, I guess we can call it for now, as opposed to north. That's much more difficult than trying to sort out the one that, that we're working on right now. I did spend quite a bit of time over the weekend, uh, putting in, uh, a proposed street layout for the north section, which took into account the multiple different wetlands districts when you put the overlay map on. To try and address questions that have been raised or suggestions that have been made by both the, the, uh, DPW Commissioner as well as the, the Fire Department. To try and make sure we have several access and egresses into that site. Given the potential that, at least theoretically, and again, it's, it's an on-demand type of arrangement in terms of what gets built. But to try and make sure that there's no significant number of housing units which would only have single access. I mean, we would never allow that in, in a, in a subdivision. Uh, in, in typical subdivisions in East Bridgewater, even the biggest ones, that have one access and egress from a, from a, a public road. There's somewhere in the range of thirty-five to forty-five houses. This site would have far more than that potentially as it gets built out. So what I tried to do is show a road layout that both meets the requirements, or potentially meets the requirements of lot layouts and so forth in terms of areas. And provide, as, as I remember from doing that over the weekend, and my mind is foggy now that I've been working with that for so long, but I think we showed two accesses on Route eighteen, two accesses off of Winter Street. With a bunch of interconnecting roads that, that do in fact connect together so that you can theoretically get to all potential housing units from either the Winter Street side or the Route eighteen side. And, and I did, admittedly, it's, it's on a, it's on a paper map, on, on a paper GIS layout. It's online. What those wetlands actually look at when they get mapped and flagged is still an open question. The roads all cross, cross at the narrowest potential locations. And I believe show access to the majority, if not all, of the developable upland in the site. There's actually a couple of miles of roadway in there when you put all of that together. But that's what I would expect the, when it's filed under subdivision control, that's what I would expect to see there over time, not, not day one, obviously, but. The other thing I think we need to think about is that my understanding of, of the requirements under the MBTA zoning district is that although we're a relatively unique member of the hundred and thirty-ish, give or take, communities, my understanding is the district does allow us to provide a suggested map for subdivision control for the subdivision approval process. A hundred and twenty-some are of the towns, the majority of their land that they're proposing for more dense development already has roadways in it. Public ways. We're one of the few towns that, that has a large parcel of land that doesn't. The obvious reason behind that is we now have, or we will have very shortly, access to wastewater treatment facility. Which up until now, that area was marginally, if at all, developable because of that. So I'm still working on the MBTA, uh, south zoning district. I, I can say right now that it does touch on Spring Street, it does include the, uh, whatever we want to call that site in the, in the, in the downtown area that was the, uh, engineering slash, uh, steel facility. There is a significant number of acres there. There is some question as to the, uh, environmental status of that land. I'm not going to try and address that. Uh, that's not really a planning board matter. But I should have a set of maps similar to these for that in, in, maybe even by our next meeting.
How many sites does this, would you potentially have in this area?
Houses? How many units?
Houses.
Yeah.
Uh, you could actually fit over five hundred, depending on what gets developed.
Okay.
My thought, given the marketplace in East Bridgewater and given this location, is that the majority of those would be single duplex and maybe quads. Uh, I don't see a significant number of high-density twelve-unit buildings in there, but.
No.
It's really going to be market-driven.
I mean, this is a proposal, this doesn't mean this would happen right away. This is something.
Not at all.
This is going to take time, it's going to take someone interested.
The general thought across the Commonwealth of Massachusetts right now is that given where interest rates are and given the commercial market for, for lending money, that the majority of towns aren't going to see any change for several years.
Oh, really?
Because, because developers aren't going to pay double-digit interest rates to build, uh, spec, spec housing right now.
Right.
They're not doing it now and where they, where they have ability to do that.
Yeah, even though there's a need for housing, obviously, but.
Well, the nast- the nasty thing about housing, the, the need and, and the, and the demand, uh, don't necessarily follow the commercial marketplace.
Right.
Those two things are very disconnected and have been for, for many, many decades.
Yep.
If the interest rates were consistently low and the market demand was consistently high, then, then you could rationalize that you will have a significant, uh, amount of building going on. You, you can have theoretically, maybe not a good analogy, but you could have what happened in eighty-four, five, six, and seven. Where everybody was trying to develop simultaneously every piece of land they could find.
Right.
Because there was a huge demand for housing. For us baby boomers that were coming, coming out of the, you know, the, the first set of families that were coming up from parents following World War Two.
Yep.
Yep.
Massive demand at that point in time. So everybody was trying to do the same thing simultaneously. And what happened is that led to a major crash in late eighty-seven, early eighty-eight.
I see.
So I don't ever expect to see that, but that's what market, market demand looks like. I don't think we'll ever see interest rates that low and demand that high at the same time. But, but it's hard to project where that goes.
Right, right. I understand.
That's all I have. If you've got questions, I'd be more than happy to try and answer them, but.
Other questions, comments? I think, Roy, that the, the plan now is either one or both of these districts would be presented at a special town meeting at some point in the fall to maintain the timetable, which is the end of the year for approval.
Yes, and would like to have some, some open sessions or open seminars or whatever you want to call them with the general public. Sometime either late May or early June before we get into the real heart of the summertime, so that everybody will have a chance to, to see what we're doing here. And that we, we can also, maybe at the next meeting, we can further define, uh, we can sort out what needs to be online here. Very disappointing here tonight that tonight's agenda is not there with all of its documents, as well as the, the email that went out today. We'll work through that.
Yeah, it should be available, yeah.
In any case, uh, I, I think one of the other things we want to try and keep in mind, and, and I don't want to let it, uh, distract us from our goal, because our goal is a planning board is to meet the requirements of state law that, that's currently been mandated. I think we all know there's now multiple court cases going on. We also know that the State Supreme Court, uh, for the first time in its recorded history, has opted to immediately move a case at the lowest level of the courts directly to the State Supreme Court to make a decision because they've acknowledged that, number one, there's some clear, obvious issues that need to get adjudicated. Number two, it affects a significant number of communities within the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, those hundred and thirty, give or take, communities in the MBTA zoning district. So, so they, and, and I think we know this, but supposedly that adding some additional towns, uh, arguments into the, the Milton case, it's actually the Milton case that they've agreed to move up to the State Supreme Court.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, according to an article that I read in, in one of the Commonwealth newsletters that comes out, they have never in their history done this before. They have never taken a case that was on file with a, a lower court and has not even heard arguments yet and said they will, they will make a decision on it. So obviously, for whatever reason, they may think it's fine and they're just going to state so, I don't know. The important thing to keep in mind is that whatever they decide, uh, if we're going, we've adopted and met the requirements, then we're fine. If they say no, then, uh, Kevin may want to comment on this, but there's a lot of attorneys that have said if they said no, the, the bylaw is no good, then all of these just go away. Because they're all being written with a, with a introductory paragraph that says these are, these are being adopted based on the requirements under the State, State Zoning Act, which is actually only about one page. All of this other stuff is coming from multiple other places. The rules, the regulations, the, the numbers, e- even the state, the state act itself does not have any numbers in it.
It goes to, goes to the question of whether, whether, uh, all zoning is local. I think when all of a sudden, um.
Well, I think the question goes, legally goes well beyond that because.
Well, but, but, I mean, in, in its essence, you know, can, can the, can the legislature mandate something in the nature of this that, that basically dictates zoning to a, to a, you know?
I think the real question is could the legislature modify chapter forty-eight, which is the zoning bylaw, by delegating the majority of the requirements for that change to other third-party departments within the state, is, which is what they've done. That has been raised as a serious question and I can't comment on that, but again, that has never happened before. They've never written a piece in the state zoning bylaw and delegated some other division, some other department to, you go ahead and write the details. Normally, the details belong to the community. So, but our charter as of right now is that we need to continue working on this, ignore what's going on at the court level, come up with our best proposal to go to town meeting in the fall and do our best to get the town to adopt that proposal. Because part of the state law, which again, isn't actually in the state law that has those timelines in it, says that we need to do that by December thirty-first.
Sounds like a silly question, but who owns all the, this land?
Three.
Uh, the assessors, the assessors map listing is on one of those tables. You need to look at those parcels and, and lots to, to see that.
I mean, they're privately owned.
Well, the town owns one or two of them.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
But if you just look up the, uh, the parcel number, map number, parcel number, the assessors map tells you that.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
I wasn't, I, it's, so it's not town-owned land, but some of it would be.
A substantial parcel, maybe two parcels, somewhere in the range of thirty or forty acres is actually town-owned.
Other comments or questions?
No.
Anything else to come before the board from any of the members?
No.
Uh, Chair would just say that, um, noted the fact that our friend Sherri Bates, who's not with us tonight, uh, has been with us for the last three years as a member. We appreciate her service, she's elected because of work commitments not to run for reelection, so we, uh, we do thank Sherri and wish her, uh, wish her well, uh, going forward.
Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
Other than that, Mr. Lawler?
Yes, is it time? Is it that time?
That would be the time.
Eh, but de, 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 that's all, folks.
And Mr. Law, Lawler is running.
Mr. Law.
Is on the ballot.
He is, indeed.
I'll second that. I'll second that.
So, Mr. Lawler's uniquely phrased motion is seconded by Mr. Gardner. All those in favor of the motion during the meeting, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Mr. Gardner?